Just going to come back.
January 25, regular Board of Supervisor session.
Thanks Jake. All right, we'll call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. We'll call Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
He's a little delayed there Steve.
I know.
Is there a motion for this morning's agenda?
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johner.
Aye.
Jake, any communications received by your office?
No, sir.
Board?
No.
All right, nothing from me either. Very good. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda, the public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. They may be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. But the board cannot act on any comments this morning. So are there any public comments, items not listed on this morning's agenda? Mr. Woodhouse, welcome.
Steve Woodhouse, Marion County Tribune and Marion County Express. I was just wondering if you guys have discussed or will consider discussing how the county will fund services that property taxes are ended by as the state legislature has discussed. I just want to throw that out there.
Well Steve, I want to thank you for that, since it's budget. Timely question. We have not, we have not talked about that at all in a board meeting. I'm sure the board is familiar with the legislative, or at least the proposal. And we have to have some discussion with legislators to understand what they are attempting to accomplish and how they're going to assist us in providing those services. Because as you know, property taxes is the only way we raise revenue. To plow the streets, provide law enforcement and do the things we do. So that's at the beginning stages. We'll see what the proposal is. But thank you for the question though.
Great question though, thank you.
Yeah, very good. We'll keep that on our radar screen, most certainly. Any other public comments, items not listed on this morning's agenda? Oh, and Steve, to your question, I'll be talking with Kelly tomorrow, or no, Thursday, I'll be in Des Moines all day on other issues. So I will be mentioning this to her as well. So I just wanted to add that. Any other comments, items not listed on this morning's agenda? Anything online? Anything else? Very good. We'll move on. Is there a motion for this morning's consent agenda?
Yeah, make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey.
Aye.
Johner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Very good. Onto business. We start this afternoon, and Jake will issue a heads up. This afternoon, but. Not this morning, this afternoon. But part of that discussion will be our benefit renewal, which we have Sarah, and Sarah, I'll let you introduce yourself and where you're from, but to talk about proposals for the benefit renewal for Marion County. So Sarah from Holmes Murphy, take your way.
All right, thank you Mark. As Mark mentioned, I'm Sarah Bradshaw with Holmes Murphy, and I'm happy to be here today as your benefit consulting partner to the county. And we do have some relevant topics to discuss today, given that you are in your budget discussions now. So first and foremost, and maybe Renee, you can help me here with one of these. You should be good right there. Thank you. So first and foremost, we have just a brief agenda today that we want to cover. Wanted to talk a little bit about our role at Holmes Murphy and how that relates to the county and how we help the county. Then healthcare landscape in general. Some 2022 considerations for the county's health insurance plan particularly. Following that, we'll talk a little bit about benchmarking against other public entities as well as the private market. And then at the end, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take some. So with that, we want to briefly explain what our role is and what a broker's role is in general. So first, we do assist the county with developing a strategy that is both sustainable and valuable from a benefit standpoint. And we try to balance that with the budgetary limitations or the budget each year with those employee needs. So we want to make sure that we have a healthy balance there. But most importantly, we want a sustainable program. It's nice to have really rich benefits, but if those benefits continue to cost more and more every year, from a budgetary standpoint, we know that that's just not always sustainable. So adjustments would need to be made. Secondly, brokers or consultants work as independent advocates. So we work with every insurance carrier in the market and we negotiate on your behalf. So it matters not at all to us which insurance carrier you end up with. Our fees are the same regardless, so we really do advocate for you to get you the best price and the best value. And then lastly, we mediate between the employer and the insurance company or even the employees and the insurance company to help resolve issues. So we help save time for your staff to be able to focus on their everyday job. And then how that relates particularly to Holmes Murphy is that we pride ourselves on listening. We want to listen to our employer group's challenges, their goals. And then we also partner that with our buying power. Because we are a large broker in the state of Iowa, we have such good bargaining power with the insurance companies. We have very strong relationships with them, but we work for you. We work on behalf of the county to negotiate those rates. And then lastly, we're a private organization, so our employees own the company, and so we invest our money back into the company to help build new resources for our customers and help make their lives easier. So lastly, we hope in the end that that results in us being your trusted business partner in long term. So moving on a little bit to the healthcare landscape. Healthcare is really complicated. Health insurance is extremely complicated, so we like to make it a simple equation. And how we can control cost on the health insurance front is really taking up the price that you pay for that insurance times the amount of use that goes into that. And that gets us to our cost. And there's several ways we can influence both of those factors. First on price, we know that inflation hits the healthcare industry pretty hard. So right off the bat, when we're looking at medical trend, it's around seven and a quarter. And then our pharmacy trend is around 11%. And that's based on Walmart's most recent trend productions. So that's one thing that influences price. And we also have the pharmacy prices. Pharmacy prices in general are skyrocketing, and part of that is due to the advancement in technology and the cost for research and development. We have the best healthcare in the world here in America. We can now treat so many rare diseases and so many chronic diseases that we weren't able to just a decade ago. But with that comes a price. And so in particular to the county's pharmacy utilization, the members on the health plan are really doing their part to control pharmacy spend, meaning they're choosing a generic when it's available. But when we're talking about specialty medications, there generally is not alternatives that are lower cost. So purpose of insurance is to be there when we need it. But it does come with a cost when you're talking about those advanced technologies. Next, since the ACA was put in place before the whole CARE Act back in 2010, it repealed lifetime limits on insurance plans. And what that means is that a person who had a very serious condition could essentially be uninsured once they reached a million dollars in claims. Well, that is no longer the case. So that is a great thing for consumers, especially those that have chronic conditions or a very serious condition. But that lends itself to higher costs in the insurance market because you're no longer limiting that overall spend. When we look at all those factors that influence price, we get to that last bullet point there. And what this means for the county is 60% of your renewal rating is based on the insurance carrier's book of business. So all of those bullet points above that factor in together for all of those customers to make up that rating.
So Sarah, just for the board, what's the other 40%?
The other 40% is comprised of the actual claims experience of Marion County's membership.
So when you think about how a rate is comprised, 60% of it is being part of that carrier and the group and the socialization of all the rates and people within that Walmart portfolio, and then the other 40% is specific to us, right?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, go ahead. And board, Sarah, if you don't mind, I mean, feel free to jump in with questions when you got them.
Well, that was one of the questions I had. Was it based on just Marion County's rates or overall rates of the carrier?
And do we have that percent? I mean, we got the 40%, but then does it say what that percentage, I mean, what that number is, not a percentage, but a number is?
So we will get to that in just a moment on the overall renewal.
Does it, I guess I should say, does it change ever? Does it, some companies go 70-30, does it, you know, do you see what I mean?
Great question. So yes, it can change. So each carrier has a little different underwriting philosophy. They, some will give more credibility to a company's own experience versus their book of business. For example, a United Healthcare typically would give more credit toward the group's experience versus their block of business. So you can imagine in years where you're running more favorable, more of that rate, it would be more beneficial for you to have more of that rate weighted towards your own experience. Whereas in years where you're running unfavorable, the Walmart book of business would generally be a benefit to you because more of your rate's based on that book. Very good question. If you go down the road of a different funding arrangement, for example, if the county were to self-fund the medical plan, then of course, the weighting is 100% on the claims experience of the county.
And that's a good point. So as we've talked about health insurance over the last several years, there's a, that's always comes up about self-funding. Well, as we talk about the book performance, right now, self-funding is probably not in our favor. And there really has been because our group is so small. But because of that underwriting mix of 60-40, or if you went to another company, 70-30, we get a chance to offset negative performance on a certain portion of the book for positive performance on the group as a whole, or at least stable performance. So, you know, Sarah, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for that. The second factor in the price component is use, of course. And the charge on the right indicates utilization based on age band within the membership of the Marion County Health Plan. And we see there in that blue green bar, that represents ages 45 and up as members on the health plan. And we can see that generally speaking, as we age, we tend to use more healthcare. And I myself am in that bucket, so I'm not criticizing people in that bucket by any means. But I know that that's just a fact of life, and based on the mix of employees that you have on your health plan, we do have a decent sized population that is in that age bracket. So that's one factor. Also health conditions, of course. Any type of serious health conditions can really add to the utilization. If you think about somebody who has a chronic condition that's constantly going into the doctor or trying to manage that condition, that's going to be an ongoing expense. And sometimes what leads to those health conditions, not always, but sometimes is lack of preventive care. So if someone is not going in and getting that preventive care, where they're catching something early in a, let's say a cancer stage, for example, it tends to create higher utilization in the future and higher costs because they're going in for more serious treatments at that point. So that's why we really try to stress preventive care. You had about a 45% participation in a health screening per se with the doctor of your health plan last year. So we can certainly work to improve that, and that's mainly just getting the word out and making people aware that getting that annual screening is really important.
I have a question for you. On the preventive care, is it common in some of the, you know, where you provide insurance for, that they mandate preventative care? Like, so I have seen before where you have a chance, you have a window, for six months, you have to go do preventative care. If you don't do your preventative care, then your premiums go up. Is that, do you see that in your industry?
Yes, we do. We see that both on the private and public sector. I will say during COVID, a lot of those wellness plans relaxed a little bit. However, we do have several instances where employers will incentivize the preventive care, whether that be bringing onsite screenings, biometric screenings to the workforce, or encouraging the employees to go have a relationship with their primary care doctor in that annual screening. In turn, those employees would earn either a cash incentive or a premium incentive discount off of their health premiums.
Is that more in the private sector versus the public that you're seeing that?
Yes.
Okay.
So the administration or something like that would be internal, correct?
So it can be internal or it can be through a third party vendor. From a PHI standpoint or Protected Health Information standpoint, we would always recommend that be outsourced. So handled outside of the HR team. Great question. Anybody else?
Does that impact rates? On your end, if health assessments are done at the quarter?
So really great, great question.
Repeat that question so that they can, everybody can hear it at least.
So the question was, does the employer offering the health incentive impact rates on the health plan? And we at Holmes Murphy have been pushing our insurance carriers to recognize the efforts of our employer groups on the health insurance front from a wellness standpoint for several years now. Being fully insured, as the county is, there's not a lot of rate relief tied yet to just simply putting in a wellness program and incentivizing people to get their screenings. However, if you think about the effort that you make individuals going and getting those preventive screenings, perhaps will prevent a high cost payment, which in turn does lower the rates overall because your claims experience improves.
You just have to remember Tyler, health insurance is outcome based. Unlike auto insurance where you might get a 5% good student discount, it doesn't work that way in health insurance. So that's what health pre-screenings and everything else, the rate comes off if there are good outcomes. But if there are pre-screenings and bad outcomes, your rates are still going to go up. But they are advocating to try to get that included, something like that.
That brings up a really good point about funding. Because when you are fully insured, while you have less risk financially, you also don't have as much upside when you do perform better than what the insurance company thinks you're going to do. So we will continue to evaluate funding arrangements. As Mark mentioned, there's the self-funding aspect, which is along the complete opposite side of the spectrum of where you were today. But there's a lot in the middle that we can do from an innovation standpoint with some creative funding arrangements where there is more opportunity potentially to win when you have a positive year. So speaking specifically to the most recent claims performance for Marion County, we want to draw your attention to the red box there on the page. And this is looking at the past three years of rolling 12, 12 months of medical and pharmacy claims loss ratios. And what the loss ratio refers to is the amount of claims paid versus the amount of premium dollars that were submitted by the county. So you can see that in 2018, the rolling 12, we were at 85.8% loss ratio. And what that means is for every dollar that was paid to Walmart in premiums, Walmart turned around and paid out almost 86 cents of that dollar in claims on behalf of your members. We dropped down to that second rolling 12 and we see that jump up quite a bit. So at this point, Walmart is spending about 97 cents of every dollar that is paid in premium on claims. When we get to the most recent 12 months, now we see that Walmart is actually paying more than a dollar. So for every dollar received, they're paying out a dollar, almost a dollar and 90 cents. And when it gets to be above that 75 to 80% loss ratio range, that is where a carrier starts to turn upside down as far as being able to be profitable. So the positive news for the county right now is that you are cooled with Walmart's book of business. And 60% of your rate is based on Walmart's book of business, which in general is running or performing better than the county's healthcare claims right now.
And what's driving that, Sarah, if you touch on, it goes back to your previous slide, is pharmacy, prescription drugs.
That's exactly right, Mark. So we put a couple bullet points on here just to show your over-year change in medical and pharmacy claims. So we're not up very much on the medical claims paid, but on the pharmacy front, we're up significantly. And back to our earlier discussion, it's really driven by those high cost specialty medications that any one of us at any time could need for ourselves or our family members. So we're happy that those are available, but those do come with a cost. And so that spend on pharmacy could really fluctuate year to year based on who's on the plan, what their needs are. Perhaps some of those medications are due to an acute event that's going to be resolved. And then perhaps next year, they won't, they won't be needed. But that will, that it does change and fluctuate. And speaking a little bit to pharmacy, what Walmart does on your behalf is every year they reevaluate their pharmacy contract. And so they're looking for ways to improve that pricing for you as members. And as new drugs enter the market, they will shift their formulary from time to time so that perhaps a drug that somebody was taking today becomes less expensive because maybe a generic has entered the market and vice versa. So there's opportunity for savings in the pharmacy from time to time. And as consumers, it's important to know that choosing a generic when you can is really a good way to save money. Not only for yourself, but for the county as well. But again, there's situations where there's no other option.
And Sarah, this is not something when you're, if you were in the hospital and you had to have a drug, this is just physically going to the pharmacy?
Yes, so most of the medications that you would receive in a hospital setting would be billed through the hospital or the medical plans.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah, okay. Yeah, I just wanted clarity on that because I was thinking of the rise of COVID. Let's say if there was something there, you know, and you were to receive, you know, medicine when you were in the hospital or something versus actually being out and getting it at the pharmacy. So thank you for that clarity.
I know this is a redundant question, but if generic medicines are as effective as the name brand, why are we not, as a country, going saying, hey, enough's enough?
So you're asking the age old question that we've been trying to solve for our customers for many years. And, you know, us along with those in Washington DC are sort of banging their heads against the wall because there's so much money that is being made in the pharmaceutical industry. And there's a lot of hands in one pot and everybody's trying to get their share. So until we make some major changes to the way that pharmaceutical companies operate, and again, I'm not knocking them because we need them for our treatments and therapies. But until we start to make changes on the political front in that realm, we're going to continue to see rising costs and us as brokers and consultants battling that on your behalf.
I pretty much knew the answer to the question. I just wanted to hear, I just wanted to hear if somebody smarter than me.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to answer it a little different way, Steve, as someone who's been in this industry for quite a while. It's the pharmaceutical companies, but it's the regulatory environment. It costs so much to get a drug to market because of the regulations surrounding it. As you saw with COVID, that period was shortened. They got emergency authorization. They were able to get a drug that normally takes 10 years done in a much shorter period of time. That is not the normal way this works. It takes a lot longer and pharmaceutical companies spend millions of dollars working through federal red tape to get anything out to market. So it's a combination of probably corporate structure, there certainly is that, but it's also the way our government works. They're notoriously slow and expensive.
So I, makes me question another, something else. And regarding getting your COVID shots, is that in this at all?
No, it is not.
Okay. I just needed that clarity, so, you know, people.
And Mark, thank you for bringing that up about the regulatory environment. I will add to that too along those lines, the patent process for some of these medications. So these manufacturers want to obviously extend the patent as long as they can to monopolize on that drug and that profit. So until we make some more changes along those lines with patents and allowing generics to enter markets sooner, we're going to continue to fight that battle.
Yeah, that's great advice.
Can you think about all the commercials you see on TV?
That's right. Very good. Thank you, Sarah. Those are great.
So now we're going to get into the specifics around where we're at today when we're looking at the Walmart renewal for July 1st of 2022. So given the history we just provided, you know, that 40% of the rate is based on the claims experience, which we know is running higher right now. So overall, Walmart issued a 10.42% increase to Marion County's renewal. And that equates to around $220,000 increase in overall premium.
And just so, just so we understand that, that's all in. So that's employer, employee combined. When we get to the budget presentation, we'll talk about that split when we get there this afternoon.
So in an effort to, one, either justify or argue the renewal with Walmart and to see if there was any cost savings opportunities, we did go to market on behalf of the county. We went to United Healthcare, Health Partners, who is a very well-known carrier out of Minnesota. And then Gravy, who is a newer partner to this market, but they've been in Minnesota for the last several years. So the results of that are shown there on the screen. United Healthcare, they traditionally release a quote regardless of how bad it is. So they did release a quote, but it is, as you can see, much higher than your renewal with Walmart. So what that tells us right there is that your Walmart renewal is fair. And in fact, probably lower than where it should have been. Health Partners, they're a little more conservative. They're, they're pretty picky about their risk that they take on, so they don't always release a quote. And their other writers told me that they were about 4, 3 to 4% above your Walmart renewal rates. So they were more in that 14% range, which is actually where we anticipated their renewal to fall. So Walmart did give about 4% credit off of that renewal. So when we evaluated all of the options after the marketing efforts, we arrived at three different choices. We could go a few different routes here. We could renew with Walmart and absorb that $220,000 increase to maintain stability for the employees. Walmart is a familiar name. They have been a good carrier partner. We could renew with Walmart and then look at shifting some of the contributions. So how do we restructure that to share in the cost of that increase? And then lastly, we could seriously consider Gravy. Gravy is coming in very competitive. They have a good reputation over the past couple of years with our customers here in the Iowa markets specifically. And they're aggressive, but they're also not out to buy business. So they give a second year renewal rate cap. So that gives a little peace of mind in knowing that, you know, this isn't just a one-year deal for them. So there's a lot to consider when we're looking at those options.
I guess for me, I'd have to, I'd have to, I'd have to understand a little more definition of competitive. You know, you say at less than half a. You know, you say at less than half of Walmart's renewal rate, but is the coverage as good? I guess, I guess that's what I'm looking at when I see competitive. I'm looking at is the coverage as good as what we have now? And I guess we'll get into that conversation.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm happy to go into a few more details if you.
Yeah, and I think that'd be great, at least from an overview standpoint. Because even with Walmart, it's not just renewal, but we can restructure with Walmart. So there are things we can do to stay with Walmart that will also reduce the rate. Now, those are gonna, those will be more painful, I think, from a cost standpoint. But there are some options there. So Sarah, maybe high level, we're gonna talk about this during budget, obviously, but let's go through that a little bit.
From a contribution strategy restructure, the options that we could consider are applying a higher employee cost share to the richest benefit offering, the PPO benefit. And then that would be considered a buy-up. If the employees wanted to have that richer benefit, they could pay a little bit more in premium for that, keeping the structure the same on the HMO policy and then as well as the high deductible. So the increase would be shared amongst employees and the county according to the current contribution split today, with the exception of increasing the employee's cost share on that richest plan.
Would that include?
Hold on, Tyler. Hold on, Tyler. What is that?
It's Ed.
Ed, yeah, can you read that? Because I'd have to get new glasses to see that.
I am curious, the issue of.
Oh, I can read that. I am curious, the issue of COVID testing and our monoclonal antibody infusions. We were told that those treatments were no cost to the consumer, but they are showing up on our EOB as being paid in part by Walmart. But have a footnote that says the provider should not attempt to collect the remaining bill. So are those paid benefits actually being counted by Walmart as part of our experience or usage despite the fact that they are being reimbursed by the feds for that money?
Well, let's answer that one first. I think the answer is that should not be included by Walmart.
So anything that is being covered by the federal government as far as COVID-related should not be counted against the county's claims experience. So that is something that we can look into to make sure that that's not happening. And there are certain components of COVID that were covered at no member cost share. So if this particular person who's seeing something on an EOB can give me that information, I'll be happy to look into that for you. Second, is there a reason we are not offering a four-tier option, being employee and children rather than just family? Really great question, and a lot of my customers have explored this option in the past. When you have a two-tier rate structure with only single and family, you can imagine that your employee spouse and your employee children tiers would greatly benefit from a reduced rate by moving to that four-tier structure. But your families are the ones who really feel that impact because inevitably that family rate goes up and then the other two tiers fall in line between the single and the family. So definitely something to consider, but it does have an impact on your families.
Connor, do you have a question?
Yeah, Tyler, put it.
Ed's second part was my question.
I mean, I do, I see that in the private quite a bit, where the, you know, and I suppose we'd have to just explore what the cost would be, yeah.
I've always had four-tier rate structures. But traditionally, what the county has done because of the size of our group is we've tried to minimize the impact to families. So to be just straight out honest, we've structured the plan so that the families don't take a major, major hit as they go up, as rates are increasing. Singles don't pay that much for our insurance right now. What's the contribution rate?
Depends on the plan.
Yeah.
Thirty-three to what, forty-five?
Right.
And we have looked at the tiered.
Yep.
Mark knows. I mean, we've looked at that tier pricing before, and the family is, it goes out almost outrageous.
Significantly, which then gets to a competitive issue for us in hiring. Because even though that sounds really good, you can split your costs up. When we go to the market to then try to get somebody with a young family to come here for a job, and they see that rate, especially in government employment, because we do have a partnership with our employees in paying for insurance. A lot of places don't. Governments are still footing one-hundred percent of the bill. I don't know how they do that, but they do. So that poses issues on that side, too.
And is it, if you were to split that up where you had, you know, with child option, could you split those children? Is that what's going on in the private sector? Is they're splitting them up and saying, I'm taking one child and you're taking one child? How's that work?
Go ahead, go ahead, sir. I was gonna say typically, you would, it would be the same rate whether you have one child or five on the plan. So employee child or children rate is how we refer to that as.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand the bigger picture of it, I guess, and why. I mean, obviously, cost for those that are single parents and that have to provide for insurance. But just trying to look at, you know, looking at it on both sides.
And traditionally, the public sector has really focused in on the employees and making sure their costs are as low as they can be to attract that talent. And then families traditionally do pay more for that coverage.
Good. Very good. Good question, Ed. Thank you. Are any other, Tyler, anything else? Lisa?
No, I was gonna pass back.
Oh, okay.
The last option.
Yeah.
So when it comes to moving carriers, and Steve, you brought up a good point. You know, you have to make sure that you're still getting the value. Just because it's cheaper doesn't mean it's going to be as good. And whenever you're talking about moving from one insurance carrier to another, there's going to be some change. There will be nuances in the coverage. In some cases, what Gravy Aetna has to offer is better from a plan design standpoint of what you have with Walmart. And that would just be one plan option. That, for example, they have one plan option where your primary care and your specialist visits are covered in full and your generic medications. So for somebody who, that's all they have, is just general office visits, it may be a generic prescription, that might be a really attractive plan option for them to choose. They also have a plan design that matches your one-thousand PPO and HMO. So we have asked them to match that benefit design. And then they'll, of course, match your high deductible health plan as well. So there will be some plan differences specific to pharmacy. That is where we most often see the biggest change between carriers because every carrier sets their formulary a little bit different. So a drug that you're on with Walmart could be a tier two. With the move to another carrier, that could move to tier one, or it could move to tier three. Keep in mind that even if you stay with Walmart, they change their formulary every year as well. So there's always a chance your drug could shift. We also have the network. So between the Walmart network and the Aetna network, which Gravy utilizes, there could be some provider differences where some providers may not be in or participating in the Aetna network that did participate in Walmart's. We ran an initial disruption report, however, and the top providers that are being utilized by members of the county are all in the Aetna network with the exception of one that we're working on right now.
Thank you.
Market share-wise, I'm assuming Walmart still has competitive, you know, do they?
They really do. They really do.
They're over, what, eighty percent of the Iowa market?
They're over eighty percent market share in the Iowa market. And, you know, generally speaking, they do insurance really well. They pay claims. You don't hear a lot of noise. Their network is very large. United Healthcare, same thing. Network's very large. They just don't have as big a market share.
So Sarah, I wanna, I wanna touch on that during the course of this discussion. And as you think about this plan, what we're trying to offer, reducing complexity is a cost savings. So even though sometimes we get hung up on plan design and we try to slice and dice this a hundred different ways, there is an advantage. I don't like anybody having eighty-five percent market share of anything. I think that's too much. But for us, there is an advantage to having someone who is large, has capacity, pools their rate, and pays their claims. And then from an operational standpoint, when we work with our group here through Holmes Murphy, complexity is minimized. We get answers. Our employees get answers and things get done. So there is an advantage to that that isn't necessarily quantified here in the dollars that we need to keep in mind. So if you go to a Gravy, unknown quantity, five years old, private equity backed, Sarah and I had a long conversation about that, which always makes me nervous. Since I worked in private equity, I know this. But you can save on money. You can cut your dollars. So that's the balance point. We can find ways to save money, pure dollars. But will we end up spending more at the end of the day through administration? Through employees not getting their questions answered, maybe not getting their claims paid on time? That's a different calculus. So we have to balance those points.
And change is hard. So, I mean, when you talk about something like that, it is, yeah.
Just to add a little more color around Gravy and to Mark's point about the service you receive in return. Gravy started out as employer-focused, so they actually went direct to employers. So they are very, they're very much about customer service and helping employees and members with their questions. So I would say they rival Walmart when it comes to that customer service. So from that standpoint, I feel very, very secure in that, if that was a consideration. But we have a lot more fact-finding to do on the financial side of things with Gravy.
I think the network is also important, too. I mean, if they're always network, what good are you, what goods they deserve?
Well, yeah, and that's why, that's why Sarah's been doing some homework, talking to them. After she told me about Gravy, I said, well, they've got to be able to cover what we cover, where our employees go. If they can't do that, and there's a material disruption, probably not a good fit. But so far, they seem to cover about every provider we have.
Yes, that's right. And I have another Iowa customer that moved to Gravy two years ago from Walmart and has had a very positive experience. We've had very limited network disruption. They're mainly in Iowa, but also in a couple other states. So one of the things to consider is familiarity. When you talk about Gravy, a lot of people don't know who they are. And so there's a little bit of a learning curve with the providers to know, okay, we need to call the number on the Gravy card, not call Aetna because they're just the network. So we've worked through a lot of those bumps in the road, if you will, with some of our other customers. So you certainly would not be a guinea pig in this market with Gravy.
Very good. And also, it's incumbent upon us, and Sarah, I'm very glad you brought this forward. We need to look at options. It's our responsibility to do our full due diligence on the options to get the best providers, best insurance for our employees, but also use taxpayer dollars to the wisest possible extent. So, thank you. Oh, yeah, is there anything else on that one, Sarah?
I think we wrapped up that one. Any other questions?
Steve, Keesha?
No.
I might be frozen here. Okay, so we just, I don't want to take up too much more of your meeting time, but we do have some benchmarking to show. And the yellow bar is representative of Marion County's one-thousand PPO plan. So what we're showing at the top is single deductibles, family deductibles, and then the out-of-pocket maximums. So you can see, when you're looking at comparing Marion County to the public sector and then also to all sectors within this benchmarking sample, that Marion County's benefit plan is richer than what we see out in the market. So the gray bar there is all funding plans. And then the dark gray or almost black bar is comparing you to other public entities. So we consider plan design when we're looking at renewals as well. So if we have, you know, an extremely rich plan design, we might have a little bit of wiggle room to make some adjustments to save some premium dollars. Or on the other side of that, we can say to the employees, yes, you know, our plans are going up, but we have very rich benefits for you, give you peace of mind in that. And then from a premium standpoint, we talked a little bit about the employee's contribution. That's on the bottom of this page on the left. And you can see, again, in yellow, that's Marion County's single premium and then family. So really richer on the single side and then right in line with other public entities on the family.
Very good.
Same story here on HMO, so we won't spend a lot of time. The plan design is identical between the HMO and PPO, just for awareness here. But when you're looking at other HMO-based plans, again, Marion County's plan stacks up very well against the market. And then from a premium standpoint as well, you can see at the bottom, again, the single premium, much richer and better for the employees than what we see in the market. And then family, again, richer as well. And lastly, the high deductible health plan, this is the plan that comes with it a health savings account where you can save pre-tax dollars towards that higher deductible. So from a plan design standpoint at the top, again, you're right in line with other employers from a deductible and out-of-pocket standpoint at that thirty-five-hundred single premium. You can see bottom left, there is no yellow bar. And that is because employees do not pay a contribution for premiums on that plan. And then family, much, much richer than the market. On the right, we have one additional data point that we want to share, and that's the health savings account contribution. Marion County does contribute fifteen-hundred dollars a year towards the health savings accounts. So when you're comparing that to both the private and public sector, from a single standpoint, it is much richer for a contribution of what we see. Family is a little bit less than market, and that's something that everybody is aware of. Questions on that benchmarking?
Steve, Keesha, any questions for Sarah on that?
We went through it pretty fast.
And just so, for the board, we start our budget meetings this afternoon. So I would encourage you, as you get a chance to digest this information, Sarah, it is okay with you. Steve or Keesha reach out to you.
Absolutely.
Ask questions, those kinds of things. So feel free to do that. And then we'll set our schedule this afternoon when we will deal with insurance renewal. And Sarah, I might even have you come back down for that when we deal with this specifically.
I will be happy to.
All right.
And lastly, just want to thank you all for your time and mention that I have a whole team of support that helps assist Lisa and Renee specifically day-to-day. So wanted to make sure and mention them here today.
Very good. Sarah, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Sorry for all the questions.
Do a great question.
All right, let's have a motion to close discussion on this item.
I'll make motion to close discussion.
Second.
Johnr.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. On the next item, we have developing great relationships site plan approval.
Yes.
Missy.
So developing great relationships was approved by a special use permit on January eighteenth. This is a proposed use of five cabins to be built at the described, as described in the north, two-hundred-and-fifty feet, in the west, four-hundred-and-thirty-five feet, in the southwest quarter, the northwest quarter, twenty-four seventeen, seventy-seven eighteen, and then parcel C of the northwest quarter. Those two parcels will be combined if this is approved. These are properties that were owned by Stan Merrier, and he has transferred them to building great relationships. This is a private campground of sorts, not to be utilized as we think of like Hornsberry cabins or something like that. They'll hold six to twelve intensive retreats, one to five days a year. So this is not, and that was specified. So, uh, this is not, and that was specified when the special use permit was approved by the Board of Adjustments to ensure that this special use permit is unique and is tied to the owner. If this property were ever to sell, um, these cabins, and these cabins were to be utilized in a different manner, they would be required to come back before the Board of Adjustments. So, given, um, the fact that the survey and these parcels were set forth prior to two thousand and ten, they are allowed to use the access, um, by easement granted by Mr. Vermeer, which will, as, as I noted, will be, become a private, um, road of two hundred and forty-first lane. And then each cabin and Mr. Vermeer's property will have a separate address. They will be working with Marion County Environmental Health to put in a system, whether it be one system or a, a couple different cluster systems. The existing building there is a tennis court, will be utilized as a meeting area, and it will be included in the septic updates. So they're working with, with it on that. Marion County engineer had no concerns as this is a private road, uh, paved all the way back from Decatur Drive.
Why do we have to, why do we have to designate it as a name if it's a private road? Is it just for addressing purposes?
Yes.
Is this a private endeavor or is it?
That's what I was gonna ask you, yeah.
Yes, it is a private endeavor.
Is it, is it?
It's a not-for-profit.
Is it based on, within a organization?
Um, Developing Great Relationships has a current operation at the old Straw Town building, and this is an expansion. So their offices and their, um,
So this is for profit? This is a nonprofit?
They did disclose it as a not, because it's a ministry, it's a not-for-profit, yeah. So, um, so yeah, it's a ministry, and the ministry holds their current counseling operation at the Straw Town. And then this is, would be set up to...
Who are they affiliated with?
I mean...
Wendy, what do you think, Steve?
Well, it's, she says it's a ministry, but it's a private endeavor. I...
Sure, there are all kinds of them.
I guess there is, yeah. Okay.
Um, the cabins are gonna be about five hundred square feet, so they're twenty by twenty-five. And we all set backwards requirements once, once those two parcels are combined. There'll be no signage along the road. No signage will be, this will be a very discreet, um, operation back there, signs on the, each cabin, minimal lighting, and then parking along the, you know, living cabin. When we look at the future of the proposed property, as they disclosed in the meeting, uh, when the day comes that Mr. Vermeer, Vermeer no longer occupies the property, he will be donating it to his ministry. It, it's a fairly basic, um, site plan, like I said, granted, in our special use permit because it's not required, there's only a change from A1, so minimal impact.
Yeah, because it was A1, right? Yeah.
And it's still A1, yes.
Okay.
So when the, when they put these specifications on the special use permit, what they wanted to make sure was that if the future use of these cabins were to change, if they...
That would be my thing, for, because of the profit, you know, and the nonprofit versus profit at one point down the road um, for property tax, you know, valuation, so, yeah.
Instead of following, um, typically special use permits follow the property, and in this situation, it follows the owner. So if this is to change hands of these cabins were to be utilized in a different manner, under a different ownership, they would have to then obtain any special use permit. So the review process would take place.
And there is, and I know this is a question of, you know, right now, we currently, you just have somebody report if it was used for something differently, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Any questions, Steve?
No.
No.
All right. Missy, do you need a motion on this to approve this? All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make motion to approve the Developing Great Relations Site Plan.
All right, I'll second that.
McCollum?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnr?
Aye.
Missy, thank you. Tyler, T-15, Flagler Bridge.
Yeah, so I wanted to give you all an update on the feasibility, the results of the feasibility study, uh, as performed by Calum Burns and Associates. Um, we decided to do a feasibility study because of the challenges of the site at T-15 Flagler Bridge. Um, so again, this is the main artery between Pell and Knoxville. Uh, this bridge is one of the largest bridges we have in the county, and is also over the railroad, which provides additional challenges. Um, the site provides challenges because the bridge is nearly forty-five feet above the stream mid, uh, which is, makes it the tallest bridge that we have in the county, and makes any pier design, uh, a custom design. So we wanted Calum Burns to look at different alternatives, possibly shortening the bridge and putting a box covered in to handle the stream, uh, versus a, a longer bridge scenario. That proved to be, uh, very costly with, as you can imagine, forty-five plus feet of fill for the road embankment. Um, so the alternatives considered were two different bridge designs, basically replacing it as-is with a similar design to today's standards, or a two-span option. Um, the option that we, that I'm presenting on moving forward with would be the two-span option because, uh, each pier on the, the, the current span, or the current bridge, is a modified standard. If we were to replace it in kind, it would again be a modified standard, and because of the pier height, each pier would be custom designed. So to reduce the number of piers, the two-span option only has one versus three. So we would look at a one custom pier design, and, um, the other major alternative there, besides being a little bit less costly, would be the pier is outside of the railroad right of way completely. So any foundation work, the abutments and the piers, would then be outside of the railroad right of way, which it would not be, um, as is the current bridge, or the other alternative. Yep. So, this does include some work on the road itself because to meet the railroad standards for clearance and accommodate a new bridge standard, uh, beam and slab thickness, with the two-span option, we'd be looking at a road raise of approximately six feet, um, possibly, to accommodate, uh, design speed. Uh, we may not go that route. We may keep the profile of the road more like it is today with some minor improvements instead of major improvements. And the reason we looked at that originally was because of the feasibility and location study that had been done on the Knoxville-Pell corridor. So that previous study made some recommendations about design guides moving forward, how to make this a enhanced two-lane highway. However, they had a footnote in that study, uh, because of population density between Knoxville and Flagler, to not start, that we could opt to not start that design criteria until after the Flagler Bridge or at Lucas Drive, which would be on the north side of the Flagler Bridge. So, we would still be in line with the, with the study, with that study, if we did not use the design criteria and raise the road to accommodate that design criteria for the road profile.
Tyler, can I, just a quick question on that study. I forgot the target dates. Or have there, have there been any target dates set for further discussion? Because it was a ten-year deal, if I remember right initially, right?
Yeah, there were no target dates. I mean, there, there was rough estimates on how, if things were to progress and funding was available, which it was not at the time that the studies were completed.
Right.
Are there options in the future, uh, with the new infrastructure bill? Definitely.
So, so part of the dilemma is how much improvement do we want to do to the bridge in line with the potential of that study coming into play? Maybe.
Maybe, yeah. Right. And I guess my recommendation would be to utilize what we would normally use through the bridge, I'm sorry, to the north side of the bridge, which would be the sixty mile an hour design speed versus sixty-five mile an hour design speed as recommended by the study.
Okay. Good.
Because we probably won't meet that criteria between Knoxville and Flagler anyway,
Right.
without a lot of property acquisition and relocation
Uh, yeah.
because of the, the, the density of homes and driveways.
Yeah, Tyler, Steve? Any thoughts on that?
No, I kind of looked this over when it, when it was originally.
So...
I agree with what Tyler's saying.
So there are a couple other things I'd like to discuss. The cost of this bridge. The Swan Bridge was the last major bridge that we did over the railroad tracks. And it was nine million for the bridge, total project cost was about one point one million because we had some slope stabilization issues. This bridge is not quite twice as long, maybe seventy or eighty percent longer. Uh, so I originally had budgeted about two point five million. Last year I upped that to three point five million, I believe. And I think if Jeff, if you click ahead a little bit, we're, we're well below that.
Wow, yeah.
Based on some recent bids, there are some contingency items built in. Uh, we have the engineering budgeted elsewhere, so outside of the project. Um, so you see a one million dollar engineering contingency by that end. And we have the soil warnings and the design, bridge design budgeted elsewhere. So if you take that out, we're still looking at a five million dollar bridge. However, that does include the option for a pedestrian or multi-use trail on the west side of the bridge. This is something we had talked about as a board multiple times through, uh, planning sessions, or five-year program discussions, but also as part of that feasibility and location study that I mentioned earlier. So, at this time, uh, the engineering, or Calum Burns is recommending or estimating six hundred to thousand to three-quarters of a million dollars to add the trail to the bridge, um, based on today's dollars again. They gave us the option to do just the foundation work. So, uh, the foundation would be there and you could expand the bridge. That would be about a hundred and forty thousand dollar add now. And then the remaining four hundred to five hundred thousand at a later date would be to put the superstructure on, so the beams, the deck, and then there's also some special requirements for pedestrian travelways over the railroad that we would have to deal with. And I'm not sure how much of that was included in this cost because we typically bear the, uh, expense of dealing with the railroad, not the project. So we budget that separately also. So in addition to this, I'm budgeting another quarter million of dealing with the railroad.
Right.
So you got a six million dollar bridge in the matter of that.
Yeah, and, so here's the last part.
Cool.
We, uh, we can afford this bridge as a design.
What?
With the funding sources that we, uh, so if, you know, Steve, he, he knows, uh, what federal funding and the borrow-ahead restrictions are like by going to certain, but we can only accumulate a balance of so many years' worth of allocation. We can only borrow ahead. So if we, we are bumping up against our max accumulation right now. If we were to utilize highway bridge program funding, we would then be too far borrowed ahead.
Right.
Unless we match with farm-to-market or SDVG funds or some other source, which we had not originally planned. So something to, to complete this bridge, something in our five-year program is gonna have to give, which I've got some ideas for that that we'll talk about probably next month. But regardless, I think there are ways we can trim this project back. The designers and I have already had some initial discussions about making this more of a bridge project, less a road project, to not do the profile realignment as the location study suggested, uh, but still make improvements, because it does, it does feel like you kind of pop onto the bridge right now. I definitely think we can improve that. Instead of the six-foot rigs, maybe it's two feet. And I think through preliminary discussions with them, I think we can trim quite a bit of this out. At this time, my recommendation would be to not include the trail. Not necessarily because of the cost of the overall bridge project, but for the cost of that trail, you know, six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars, you could do a lot of trail, property acquisition or trail realignment.
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else, and I think in this vicinity of the county, there are better options for trail alignment than the T-15 right of way.
I agree.
Yeah, I can't disagree.
So, so Tyler, I'm just trying to get in my head the numbers, the need. So we've got a bridge on our, one of our busiest roads that needs updating or replaced. This other project that we're talking about may or may not ever come to pass, this, this, uh...
The corridor, I'm sure.
The corridor. You know, like other federal projects, it may take another ten years of federal action to get there. Okay.
Do I think we can fund this project? Yes, but we're gonna have to get pretty creative with our current funding sources.
Right.
Are there opportunities in the new infrastructure bill? Possibly.
Yeah, but we don't, can we quantify those?
Not yet. And are competitive.
Sure.
So there's no guarantee of that funding.
And, and is there any, any chance that construction materials go down?
Highly unlikely.
Yeah.
So the longer we wait, the six million dollar bridge is going to be eight?
Yeah.
So again, we have three and a half million dollars for this project budgeted. We have the engineering covered, we have the dealing with the railroad hopefully covered. We, we, we'd have to tap into a million, million and a half possibly of farm-to-market or some other, which, which means we have to shift our priorities a little bit. We, because currently, I'm programming all of those farm-to-market funds or SDVG funds for other needs within the county.
So, so if you could do this, Tyler, for me, I don't know if the rest of the board would want this, but I know I would. To think about this and kind of get, get our minds around all the options. And maybe it's in here and I didn't look far enough ahead. Is there an A, B, and C option so we could go into the least expensive, middle, and then the premium option? And then within each of those, we've got the possible funding mechanisms with the whole. So what do we have to make up in each of those options to achieve the goal?
Yeah, I think that as we progress in the preliminary design, um, I will have that. And as I present my five-year program in February, early March, like I typically do, I will have that.
Okay.
Because this feasibility study was to look at the conceptual bridge design for the most part. And at this point, I'm comfortable moving forward with the two-span option. That's my recommendation. And I think we can refine that in the project as a whole, the scope of the project, to help us fall in line with our funding options.
Okay.
And available resources. In, now, to your point, I can, we can look at the potential for alternative funding outside of our known allocations, um, in those federal sources. There are current federal sources that are competitive that we can definitely look into. Initially, I'm gonna say we don't have a chance. This bridge is not in that bad of shape compared to others that are typically receiving those funds.
Right.
Uh, but in the new transportation bill or infrastructure bill, there may be more opportunity for that.
Okay.
And there are, there are significantly more bridge funding per the Iowa DOT than what we currently have. So that may change our HBP, HBP balance here in the next couple of years. Only hesitation there is Andrew Collins has mentioned to us at certain meetings, and maybe he didn't, maybe this was in a sub-allocation meeting, Steve, but that right now, and I actually was unaware of this until recently, the DOT is supplementing some of the federal funds that we get for bridges. With the new infrastructure bill, there's a possibility they quit supplementing, which could mean our dollars don't actually go up. They may actually go down, in his words.
Right, they just replace them with the fed money.
So, we will have to wait and see.
Okay. Very good. So what do you need from us today, Tyler?
This is really just an update, and just to let you know, at, at this point, my recommendation would be to proceed without or with the two-span bridge option without the trail design.
Okay. Yeah, we can make a motion on that piece.
Sure.
But yeah, the other, the other piece is the cost. I know it'll be coming up in your plan, but just to think through that.
Yeah, um, numbers were a little staggering to me when I first saw it, so we've, as we get into our five-year program, we're gonna have to reevaluate every... As we get into our five-year program, we're gonna have to reevaluate every, our priorities.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tyler on this?
No, I appreciate that, look forward to hearing anybody's opinion.
Is there a motion uh for Tyler to proceed um with the design for the? Tyler, what do you need the bridge plan with, preliminary plan without the trail?
I make that motion.
I'll second that. I got two seconds in today. Jake, did you, did you note that?
So try to figure out what the, what the motion is. So it's preliminary plan with no trail.
With no trail, yeah, two-span, wasn't it two?
Yeah, whatever.
And with the, uh, Combs and uh, Remy second. All right, Remy.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Look, oh, aye.
Tyler, thank you.
Thank you. I will say recent bids have come in really good on projects though. Estimates seem to be higher, but our bids have come in really good, so. But increasing costs is gonna be something I continue in this. The agenda item also.
I see you up again, Tyler.
Yep.
And you, you gotta talk about money.
We're gonna talk about a lot of money.
Can we, Jeff, can, can we turn that on and turn it back on and see if it won't, it won't work, okay.
I'm gonna have to shut the whole thing down, which I don't wanna do until you're.
No, I get that.
You got a camera that's not working, so.
All right, I get it, okay.
We're, we're just having issues today.
Okay, so. Really today I wanted to provide an update on the Junction ninety-two development plan, so last time that we discussed this was about this time. In two thousand twenty, so a couple of months pre-pandemic. Obviously, funding became kinda questionable in the mid to late two thousands, especially with road use tax and some of the projections that we were hearing. So obviously, I was hesitant to move the project forward, but also. We had a long-term plan for this project, and as you'll see in our schedule, we're not that far off from what we had originally planned. For Junction ninety-two because we needed fund balances in certain areas to accumulate. So what I'm presenting today is kind of just an update on where we're at schedule and timing-wise, and then also on. The, the budget and how that has changed our funding, possible funding options. What I am not doing today is presenting on the details of the building, the design, and the site layout. And I'm also not presenting on any justification for this project. We've been through that, I can definitely do that if you'd like, um, but today was more of an update and more specific on funding. Because one thing that we do need from a road department perspective is cooperation and a commitment from the board of supervisors. For this project and move forward. In my original proposal, we were looking at about thirty, thirty, thirty percent split for Marion County or for secondary roads. Thirty percent local auction sales tax, thirty percent for general fund. We're somewhere in that ballpark uh now, but cost went up. So, interesting fact that I heard Sunday. Was uh the Melzer Dallas School District took bids for their new gymnasium, they had some structural issues there. The cost per square foot for that versus an Oxford Middle School was a hundred dollars per square foot higher. So three, four hundred dollars per square foot versus three hundred. That's kinda the general building construction trend right now. We in our department, for as far as structural engineer, structural steel and structural concrete, have seen thirty to forty percent increases. On the bridges that we just completed. So again, um, this is a partnership between our department and. Uh, is probably one of, I don't know what the L E C cost, but it's probably one of the largest capital improvement projects. And one, one other thing I thought about this morning is the secondary road department has never undertaken something quite this scale. Uh, the current shop and engineered office that we have were hand-me-downs from the federal government to county conservation, and then our department leases those. Those sixty, seventy, eighty-year-old buildings, so just something interesting I thought about this morning. Okay, so what does our proposal not do? We're not requesting a bond, although that is an option. That's not something we're presenting, and I think as for Marion County, we should be proud that we're, we have options to. Pay cash for this type of project. It is, does it not utilize any income from the central shop or engineer's office? As I stated, we lease those from county, the conservation board for our use, so we do not have jurisdiction to sell those. Uh, it also is not, and this is more for the public, like you guys know this, but this is not a recommendation to consolidate all. Secondary road facilities into one location. Geographically and strategically, that wouldn't make sense for us, um, but it does make sense to consolidate some. Uh, we would still maintain Ottley, Bussy, Columbia, and the Franklin shop over by Puzzle Mall. And house equipment and personnel at those locations. What does it do, however, um, it does utilize the sale of the Pallock and Clay. Shops, so those two facilities would be consolidated into one at our new site. It would spread the cost over multiple funding sources, as I mentioned earlier. And this is a major point that I wanted to, to emphasize. It maintains status quo within our road department budget, so even though the road department is committing nearly three million dollars to this project. We are still maintaining status quo in my five-year fund balance projection, as far as the amount we spend. On ground road maintenance, construction, maintenance, all those things. What we've been doing is squirreling away money over the last couple of years, I think Jake can attest that our fund balance is rising because of that. Now, will this, will our fund balance take a hit when we spend two million dollars one year? Yes, it's going to take a hit. And I wanna be upfront, because it's the truth, is could we do something else with those dollars? Absolutely. Could we spend that two to three million dollars on, on roads? Absolutely. But this is also an investment in roads, this is because the, the savings here long-term for us in equipment and facilities. Will project down the road as far as our level of service to the roads themselves.
And a new construction, that would get you what, maybe two miles?
If we pave a new road, it might give us a mile and a half. And improve safety, I'll send you some pictures later about what I mean there, um. The safety exposures and hazards that we have in our current mechanic shop were much more evident. In December and January when we started visiting other county road department shops. And I did not include any of that in here, but I can definitely send that to you. So continuing with what the project does do, again, consolidates three shops and our office into one location. There are benefits from that, I'm not gonna go through those, you've already seen this list. Um, the one thing that did change after we did the countywide fuel logistics analysis and I presented to you on that. Is our fuel savings is substantially higher than what I had projected originally, I think I was at the five or six thousand dollar per year mark. As you can see, we're closer to fourteen thousand dollars a year, and I'm pretty confident in that number. And then, uh, Steve asked me about this the other day, energy savings are rough, energy saving cost for consolidating shops. Providing a more energy-efficient building are around five thousand dollars per year. Could it be more than that? Absolutely. And one thing that we hadn't originally considered when I got to that five thousand dollar per year number was burning our used oil. After our initial meeting with the mechanical engineer that's working on our project. We do have the option in a newer facility to look at burning waste oil, which we currently do in our central shop. We have more there than we can use in the typical winter, so we, but we have to pay to get rid of it, that's not something we wanna look at doing. If we have a more fuel-efficient or more energy-efficient building, we'll be able to use that uh used oil. For hopefully the majority of that structure, which is not factored into that cost savings.
It's something I hadn't thought of either, Tyler, and I see it up there now, that we can reduce the, other uh amount of machinery. I see the load effort, I, I never gave that a thought.
Yep, so the, the maintenance cost was listed there and the replacement cost, uh, that's something we have in our equipment replacement plan. For year three or four here, once we were relocated, if we relocate to Junction. So, to the meat of the presentation, I guess, this is the schedule of funding, so. The orange is what we have completed since we last met in January of twenty twenty, or I think it was February twenty twenty. So we completed the expansion of the IRVM building, that was largely due to. The under-roof stories that we had lost at the county home, because we had been utilizing a couple of buildings there. So, uh, we, we built a new structure there using Fund eleven, which is how IRVM is currently funded. We completed the rough grading in two thousand twenty, so we are within one foot of finished floor elevation for each of the proposed buildings. And most of the drainage has been taken care of, um, with a few minor exceptions. In twenty twenty-one, we, because I helped Missy write the ordinance for detention. We felt, I think we discussed this, we felt like we should have Garden and Associates design our detention basin. Uh, because we've had some runoff complaints from neighboring property owners or con- concerns, uh, so. Garden Associates designed the detention basins and we constructed them to that design with our own crews, that is complete. And then most recently, um, Bridget gave me a recommendation for someone to design our septic system that would accommodate two permanent. Employees at this site, plus any additional for training in our proposed break-in training room. So moving forward. We have taken uh or received RFQs from. Architecture and engineering firms, we sent out eleven and received nine back, and from that, we chose. F R K Architects and Engineers and their design team, which includes Calvin Burns and Imeg. Who is the mechanical electrical and plumbing contractor or designer. We chose them because. Of their recent experience with county road department facilities. Um, a year ago, the construction of the Kioka County shop was completed and they moved in. And Webster County was completed in two thousand seventeen, so we have since visited those two sites. And shops, and then also four other facilities. And we, we did that before we selected F R K. And it was pretty evident that that was the type of building that we wanted to proceed with. And proposed cost and whatnot in the proposals also led us to that decision. So, we've, we have had our kickoff meeting with F R K and are proceeding with that, the, the budget or the, the funding for the. Fees for engineering and design are covered under our road department budget this year, and that is as part. Currently, we're receiving appraisals for the clay and hull shop, like last time, Steve did them last time. Two thousand fifteen, maybe was the last time we had appraisal done. Um, their initial thoughts are they went up substantially, what we will see. Uh, original was like three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for both buildings, so substantially. We're still probably under half a million dollars, we're not talking huge amounts, but still have an impact on our overall project. And then the office design is something we've been working through ourselves internally, um. Because of the square footage of public buildings, we would, we may not have to go out for a formal architecture design on that building. So right now, we're just doing it internally.
I would have to say that I would think almost your figure would be higher though, with your, one of your loc- the hull location.
I would hope so. So that is not factored in, we're using the two thousand sixteen estimates in our, in the budget here. So, I mentioned the schedule earlier, we really haven't changed, so pulled right from my presentation two years ago. Uh, you can see the original timeline, and if anything, we're maybe a little bit ahead of schedule, um, because we can. Local auction sales tax fund balance is higher than we predicted. And uh. And general fund is, uh, did not take the hit that I think we may be expected from the elevator project. I think if you look at the fund balance of the general fund, it's, it's very stable. And I think we'll talk about that maybe before this afternoon.
What do you mean we didn't expect?
Well.
I don't get that. And we have a weather update.
Technical difficulty, there we go, it's all good.
So, I'm sure what you're all waiting for. This is about three million dollars higher than last time we talked. Construction is uh up to the forty percent. There's some additional things here that we had not accounted for, and I'll take the blame for that. Um, sprinkler system, when we do not have adequate water supply, is something that we did not factor in. And that, instead of a, you know, quarter million dollar absorption into the budget for our sprinkler system. We're probably looking at twice that because we're looking at holding potential, holding tanks, pumps, and generators for that system. So we're looking at the half a night or range potentially for a sprinkler system.
The compensation we had, the, the dry system is, is not feasible?
So, in our kickoff meeting with the design team, um, they indicated that for a building this size. The cost of a dry extinguisher system would be astronomical. And it is more typically seen in small spaces for IT-type. Uh, server rooms and whatnot.
Well, we had to check.
So, this morning, I received the updated, based on our kickoff meeting with the designers, I received. An updated budget or estimate for the construction of the building. It, which is a little bit less than what I have in here, however, we still wanna maintain some contingency. So that seven point five million dollars has five hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars of contingency. But we know what inflation has done, so the, and you just saw the timeline. So we're a couple of years out on some of this, uh, although we may go out to bid if things progress. Later this year, but we still don't know the inflation between now and then, I can tell you, motor graders in the last six months have went fifteen percent. We're still seeing inflation cost as, as late as December. Or as recent as December.
I think Warren County, didn't they just, didn't they just, uh?
So Warren County just.
Six million dollars for?
Six million dollars for the building and some site work for the main shop building, which I will say is a smaller footprint than ours, square footage. Um, little different building design. Uh, structure type than what we were considering. So, here is basically an updated version of what I originally proposed, of that split between. Local auction sales tax, the secondary road fund, and the general fund, so you can see two point three, two million, one point eight. The, that's, this is just an updated version of what you had seen previously. Now, let's get into some, some options, and this, I struggle with how to present this in a visual way. So, okay, lastly, we could still bond, that, that's still an option. Not my favorite option, probably not Jake's favorite option, but it's still an option.
It'd be more production after the L E C was off, but it's not, so.
No, and we'll, we'll talk about that. So, another recent um discovery upon the. ARPA final rule, uh, would be the state and local fiscal recovery funds has a. New standard allowance for revenue loss. And I'm sure we'll talk about this more, but just the, the brief overview from what I gathered from Jake. And talking with Jamie Cashman at ISAC, was that the general, the standard allocation. Has a ten million dollar cap essentially. So Marion County, even though we had claimed zero or could have claimed zero revenue loss. We can now claim a standard allocation of up to ten million dollars and utilize. The funds, ARPA funds for uh what they call general governmental services. Which within that is any service traditionally provided by the government, they gave some examples, are there a few exceptions? Yes. I read through the final rule, I do not believe that we meet any of those exceptions, so. So, from my understanding-
I would agree.
General government services, buildings and facilities would be included or an allowable use uh, as part of the final rule's standard allowance.
And I agree with Tyler. It's, you know, I looked through that new cap, kind of like a standard deduction on your tax form.
Yeah.
Uh, ten million dollars gives us a lot of room. Uh, it's fairly broad in its application, so that's good.
So, the next few slides here, I believe. Okay, again, I did not know exactly how to show this. But the top segment of this table shows the fiscal year, the fund and the fund balances as I am projecting them. This is not from Jake, although I did pick his brain a little bit about some of these fund balances. So, those are the fund balances if we do nothing other than what, what I have planned for secondary roads for Fund twenty. General fund, I left at about four and a half million dollars. I think if you look at the cash flow analysis that Jake has done for the current budget year, it may look a little bit different, but conservatively, I just assume we would kind of maintain that four point five million because that is our five year average also.
Is including that bridge?
It is not. And typically, we would not use any of our operating budget, which is what you see here from Fund twenty for roads and bridge projects. We'd look at farming market, STBG.
Okay.
HBP, outside funding sources, state and federal.
Okay.
And not our revenue tax allocation or property tax. We don't typically use those, although we could.
You could, yeah.
So, Fund twenty-nine is local option, sales tax. Um, Jake and I did a projection on this. I kind of confirmed a few things. This is definitely making some assumptions, uh, regarding local option, sales tax. This assumes pella revenues. This assumes that the LEC comes up, payment is, the final LEC payment from lost is made in June of twenty-four and no other debt relief, or yeah, debt relief is allocated by the board for any other use or debt. It also assumes that the tax relief percentages from lost, as you guys approve each year, do not change. So, these are the assumptions, I just want you to be aware. Basically, we're assuming, or I'm assuming we would move forward with Fund twenty-nine as is. And that project allocation would be five hundred thousand dollars through June twenty-four. And then without the LEC payment, that project fund would see eight hundred thousand dollars. All right?
Yeah, it's be three hundred thousand dollars bonds.
Yes. So, those are the assumptions. Now, before I get into the cost of the project, I'll talk about the ARPA call in there. That number I came up with based on a conversation I had with Chris and Steve yesterday. And all the projects on the list that you had presented, Mark. Um, so, I think there were some that may or may not happen in a hundred to two hundred thousand dollar range. I just assumed those were gonna happen. So, this is kind of what was left over. This is using all the contingency after the projects are done. Um, after the conversation with Chris, it was a one point two five million originally. Uh, he said, leave some money in there for some improvements. Uh, so, a million of that came off and there's still a quarter million there. So, this assumes that million dollars would be available. Now, I'm not necessarily asking for that. I'm presenting you the options on how ARPA funds could impact the fund balances of Fund one and Fund twenty-nine.
Got it.
What I am assuming in this scenario and the other two scenarios I presented here are i- is that the secondary road fund contributes the same amount. And we're committed to this, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So, as you can see, next year, we would have some costs incurred, approximately three hundred thousand dollars in secondary roads with the largest, uh, being two million dollars in FY twenty-four for the main shop. And then the engineer's office would come with some other site work in FY twenty-five. So, again, this is the same, the current ask with updated numbers from the previous presentation. Uh, that one point eight million less the cash flow of the sale of the two clay and pella shops, uh, the clay and pella shop. That is not included in that number because it would be a net zero for, for Fund one. It would cash in, cash out. And then two million dollars for Fund twenty-nine. And, uh, at this time, the only ARPA money I am showing would be the fuel system that you had already discussed and had on your sheet, uh, project list.
Right.
The two hundred fifteen thousand dollars in fund, what was that, one thousand seven, would be what is remaining from the sale of the county home in that capital improvement project, but I think it's called. If you don't use that, you're just gonna have to add, you know, that dollar value would have to come from general fund.
Something else.
Or there is some balance in lost. So, this is one option. In, in the bottom three lines of the table, you can see the resulting fund balances if those expenses were incurred in those particular fiscal years. So, let's just to jump to the bottom line. At the end of, at the project, at FY twenty-five, general fund would get two point six million dollars if we utilize one point eight. Fund twenty-nine, because it's seeing the influx of cash without the LEC payment, it would be at one point two five, I mean, right after our project is completed. And we still have the ARPA mon- funds available if they're not allocated to anything that's not on that current list. So, this would be an option for basically using one million dollars of the ARPA funds, not changing any of the secondary road fund usage, by taking that one million dollars and reducing the ask from the county's general fund. So, you can see on the bottom line, Fund one, the result will be three point six million dollars. And Fund twenty-nine would be the same. If that ask from ARPA will be two million, the resulting impact would be both an increase in the fund balance of Fund one, but also in Fund twenty-nine. A slight increase in Fund twenty-nine. The ask from the lost would go down hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, I'm not, uh, I should have said this at the beginning, not asking you to approve anything. The reason I wanted this presentation today, actually, I wanted it in December, was to get it before you and so we can have these discussions through our budget process this year. Because the time on, the timing is approaching. You know, our first expenses here are in FY twenty-three from secondary roads. Uh, you know, we don't have a commitment. And we're already proceeding with design and we're committing to that. But if we don't have a commitment, there's really no way without a multi-generational phased approach that this project gets done through the secondary road department only.
Right.
So, any question?
Tyler, yeah, great, um, analysis here. The ARPA, and this in this scenario, two million in ARPA. So, you're, you're, you're basically tricked. So, Chris, the projects that we had slated for this building, we're shifting those dollars over to this in this scenario, correct?
Yeah, so that, uh, out of that one point two five million, we had set aside for thirty fourteen. We're gonna continue to hold on to two hundred fifty thousand of that for some other capital improvements we have on the docket. But let's shift a million of that towards Tyler's project, I've been pulling some more of that.
Okay.
And then there was also the balance or under designated line in, in your project list that is the remainder of that amount shown there.
Yeah, we had about one, one million and change, if I got it right, Tyler?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Good. No, this is very good, uh, very good analysis.
So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, I'm not looking at it for a commitment now, but soon, but, but very soon here, we're gonna need a commitment.
Your, your point on inflation, and I just wanna re- we, we, we've seen these increasing costs. We, we have to be able, I just wanna be cautionary, all right? And I'm not in the inflation is transitory camp, cause we, we threw that word out last fall because everybody started harping on the fact prices were going up. But we do know that the economy is slowing. All the projections are showing that the economy right now is slowing, not eating up, but slowing. Jerome Powell, meetings of today and tomorrow, has already said one rate increase. The market's anticipating four. So, what will that do to costs? And that assumption of, of increasing costs, will that accelerate that curve or not? So, that's what goes through my mind. I don't have an answer for that, Tyler. I'm just thinking, the notion that inflation, it, it's a, it's a, it's an issue of too much cash chasing the same amount of goods or, or less goods. It's not a demand problem. It's a, they printed so much money problem. And that's eventually going to change as we go through the next four quarters. Um, and then what does that do to pricing? Unknown. I'll say it, it's an unknown. Does it continue to accelerate up or does that now change into a different mode? Don't know the answer to that. We do know that costs increase over time. But that rate, that what I'm saying is the rate of change, I don't know what that number will be. And you know, I'm an advocate for sooner rather than later on any major project because you'll just get increasing costs no matter what. And we've sat on, when, Steve, when did we get ninety-two, Junction ninety-two? When was that?
Two thousand-
Property buy?
And that's what I was gonna say. I thought, I was on the initial start of this project before Tyler was even on board. And he, you know, he's been-
I was still in college, dude.
Yeah. He, he's been tasked with that now. And I, and I know when we first started this project, it was, I called it the Inquisition. Cause it was a, it was, it was a pretty groundbreaking thing even then, what we were doing.
Yeah.
And and I, I know, I, I know, I've been over the rounds for this. That's why I'm totally in favor of this plan. It's just how we fund it. Cause I know what it means, I know what it's gonna mean to the county as a whole. Not only just Tyler and, and his crew, you know, being, being able to be more efficient. I think that's gonna trickle down to what it looks like out on the roads too.
I agree.
Well, and there is, and there is no more important service that county government provides than roads.
Right, I mean, doesn't make-
It's our largest department.
Doesn't make any difference what we do in places else, if you ain't got a road to get there. It's a moot point.
I mean, that affects everything else we do, is keeping the roads open. That, that is, that is primary, it's our largest department. Uh, what do we have, Tyler? About five hundred fifty miles of just gravel roads, right?
Six fifty gravel, eight fifty total.
Yeah?
I, I would like to mention though, when Tyler said he was still in college, he had second thoughts about coming here. If we do, it's all covered with you.
That is the true statement. Your representation proceeded.
So, Board, do you have any questions for Tyler on anything he's presented up here right now?
Tyler, I, first off, um, when I read that final rule, I was ecstatic that, that this could possibly be an opportunity for us because I'm not for bonding. Um, second of all, if we can sell those, uh, the pella and the clay, are you gonna put that back into the capital improvements fund?
I think that maybe is an option and as is an option to start transferring money to a capital improvement fund from general fund, something we discussed yesterday, that would be your decision. But could the sale, okay, there is some language about how those properties were originally acquired.
Right, and that's what I wondered on that. Something we can look into, but-
But when something is sold, it needs to go back to the fund it was acquired. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Whereas it was our-
So, so if it came out of Fund twenty, it's gotta go back to Fund twenty?
And by knowledge of him, we have researched that and have found no record of the answer.
Yeah, it's pretty difficult to sometimes find, um, stuff that's been in county held or taxed or, you know, examined property that long. If it goes to Fund twenty, um, that would be right in Tyler's wheelhouse there. If it goes to the general fund, there is the mechanism that you guys have already started about potentially, um, doing an annual transfer into the capital projects fund. So, I think either way, it could get there for that, it could be used for the, the new project.
Right.
Either way, there might just be some mechanisms to get it there.
So, directionally, Tyler, I mean, we'll talk about this during budget.
Yeah.
And get more clear, you know, more questions. Directionally, I like this option. I mean, if I, if I had to pick an option, we need to, we need to modernize where your, where your staff is at. Uh, I think about this from a safety standpoint. Uh, there's no question. I think it's important from a conservation standpoint to get that property back in the hands of con- conservation as we continue to develop the park and work on that. I think it's been great that they've been willing to partner with you for all these years. Um, I don't know if you bought Steve lunch or something to get that dinner, whatever.
He gets his fair share of it.
He works it out of you, right?
And we've held on to this Junction ninety-two since two thousand six. So, how much longer are we going to hang on to this property that we already acquired? And just let it sit? And we, I know we utilize it for some things, but the purpose of it was to modernize the road department base.
Exactly.
That was the purpose. And now we have, and we have to make some decisions on whether that's important enough from a priority standpoint, I believe that it is. I like this, we'll do some more top discussion on this.
I think this is being responsible to the taxpayer too, with our ARPA funds.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely. And we don't have to, I mean, what I, what I like is that there's no Fund one impact on this. That's, that's perfect. So, these are one-time dollars, let's get the biggest bang for the buck we can out of those dollars.
And I do apologize for this, that, that scenario being kind of last minute. Jake had mentioned it to me. I kind of grazed over the revenue loss because I didn't think Marion County was in that category, you know? So, I apologize for kind of the last minute.
No.
It's all right.
The, the final rule option there.
It didn't come out, Tyler, yeah.
Tyler's really, um, just over the last few days or hours or whatever. Final rule is difficult to understand and, um, I, I welcome you don't touch the general fund as well, just cause that's my comfort zone, uh, ARPA. But definitely wanna just, again, confirm that it fits the ARPA.
I'm certainly directing, I'm certainly directing you.
I think so, but then Tyler calls me at five o'clock last night and says, but this line says this, and, and so, just be-
I think we have to be really-
Just be able to make sure.
It's, it's, it's similar to our discussions on the premium pay side. There are regulations, there's a ton of information out there. But the basic core issue is that infrastructure development in the county, even if it was something that's not necessarily COVID related, we can spend on, we can use ARPA money on. And the question is, how much? Well, when they put that ten million dollar cap, that just made it a, a great opportunity for us to do some other things with that money. We were not originally, it wasn't clear that we could do that. So, I think you're, you're right in line with ARPA with this, there will be no problem there. And even on the, on the pay side, there, it's, it's highly flexible on what we can do. The intent of Congress is becoming more clear as people have time to digest this, so.
Questions have been raised to them, yeah, for clarity.
So, this is very good, Tyler, thank you. And we'll talk more during budget on this. Is there any other questions, Steve?
No, thank you, Tyler, for that.
Yeah, I know you've spent a lot of time on this and I appreciate it, um, so.
I'm just glad we finally made a determination, all of this money can be used. It can certainly change my view, all of, was important to me.
Very good. Is there a motion to close discussion?
Motion to close discussion.
Senator?
John?
Hi.
McHolmes?
Hi.
Brady?
Hi, very good. Tyler, thank you. Are you still up?
Yeah, you can't get rid of me now.
Couple things.
All right. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, a right-of-way acquisition.
Yeah, so this has actually been on the table for a couple of years now. And, um, I would say my staff has kind of tried to push me along sooner to acquire this property. Uh, so, there've been some changes in property acquisition, private property acquisition near Knoxville Estates. As you can see, some of the parcels below, the highlighted parcel there, they're a wider lock than the adjacent parcels because they acquired what was, may or may not have been a right, road right-of-way platted at one time. It was not part of the Knoxville Estates plat, but there was always that assumption it could be a road. Those were sold to the private individuals, um, to the south of this parcel that we're discussing. But for the road department, the challenge we have is a long dead-end road and narrow dead-end road. Um, and to complicate that further would be the proximity of the two driveways at the end of the public road. We had nowhere to pile snow without putting in on private property. We had nowhere to turn around. That created many challenges for a downhill back out of a long dead-end road for our cloud drivers. Um, and then further complicating that were parked vehicles, um, other safety issues with turning around in people's driveways, liability issues that come along with that. So, we had the opportunity to, uh, present an option to buy this parcel from the Guyer family. And so, that's what you have before you. We had presented them an option to buy. Uh, they did waive that right and have donated- Uh, they did waive that right and have donated this right-of-way to the road department. And we have sent the documents associated with such to county attorney's office for review. And there will be a few documents upon approval today that we will have to have signed, uh, to formalize and record the acquisition of this parcel.
County attorney's fine with that. Ed, do you have any? I don't know if he's on.
I'm very appreciative of the Guyers.
Yeah, absolutely.
As they review these documents.
Yeah, that's extremely generous of, uh, the Guyer family to do that. Very good. I, I mean, I don't have any questions.
So I recommend we approve this resolution to.
You guys have any questions?
No.
Obtain this as a right-of-way.
No brainer to me.
Yep, those are motion.
I make motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen.
Second?
McCombs?
Hi.
Remy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Very good. Tyler, uh, now we got another one, twenty twenty-two dash twenty, uh, no parking.
So upon acquisition of the recently discussed.
You can't park there.
Uh, we, and I, I don't know Troy specifically as well with this, but I know that the deputies and sheriff department have been involved here with parked vehicles at this location a number of times. For the convenience of our power drivers, for the convenience and appropriate use of this cul-de-sac for uh, garbage trucks and whatnot, safe turnaround location for, uh, passenger vehicles, we request, uh, resolution approving no parking at this particular location. The resolution would make it enforceable by our law enforcement.
Very good.
As a regu- cause, cause no parking is a regulatory sign, such as a stop sign or speed.
I'm an issue.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty.
No second.
Remy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Thank you. Tyler, thank you.
You done?
Alright. I'm just looking at the rest of this, see if we need to take a five-minute break.
I think it would be nice.
Let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back and finish the rest of the section. Jake?
Um, R- Remy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Five-minute recess.
You're recording.
Thank you, are you back on? Alright, we will, uh, entertain a motion to reconvene from our five-minute recess.
Make a motion we reconvene, yep.
Oh, yeah, make the motion first. Is there a second?
Certain.
Now Jake.
Remy?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Alright, very good, we're back in regular session. Uh, item number seven is a discussion of American Rescue Plan. Better known as ARPA funds. Little background, we've already allocated, uh, money for, uh, the facilities department. And Chris has already been working on that for L E C Courthouse and Public Health. Uh, we need to talk today really about two items specifically. And that is the proposal from Conservation and the premium pay. We've got Tyler's kind of on hold until we meet for the budget and get a chance to digest everything that he talked about. But it sounds like if you just have your sheets in your packet, we can scratch thirty fourteen project and remove that, and you put that on hold for what Tyler proposed, which I think is, is an excellent, uh, option for us. And then we have a couple smaller ones in here, uh, that we don't necessarily have to discuss today. But, uh, that's the topic for today.
We've approved the fuel, right?
Did we approve the fuel, Jake? I don't think we did yet.
If we only, the only resolution to date is a resolution including the three items.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, I think we did the fuel one. We, I mean, we sure can, we don't have a, if you look in your packet, I think we have a resolution. The next two, uh, if approved, uh, we've got a resolution on the proposal for Steve and Conservation put together, and then we have a proposal on an expenditure for premium pay. Those are the two in the packet if approved by the Board, so those are ready to go. Um, the others, anything else we can do at a later date, or we can talk exceptionally about it and get resolutions ready for the next meeting. Um, I don't yet, I'm open to either option. So, let's talk about Conservation first. Steve, you got a couple of projects on here, we have our list up, uh, we have, uh, the install of the sewers and additional cabins totaling about one point eight million, I think those are updated numbers, correct?
Yeah, those are updated numbers as of this week, but like what Tyler was talking about, what costs go. Six months, eight months from now, you know? I'm guessing they probably don't go down, but I think that's our best, um, guess right now is what those numbers will be. It also depends on the location of where those cabins might be, um, so utilities, if they're close by, or if we have to move those a distance or how that works exactly. We've got a couple different locations that are suitable. Um, but the utilities are a little further away in some areas, a little closer in other ones. And then we also are in the process of getting approval from the Corps of Engineers because that's actually on federal property, so we have to have them approve that. Which right now, they are a hundred percent behind the cabins, they think that's a great idea. So they don't think that'll be any problem, they're trying to expedite that through the federal system relatively quickly. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but, um, they're trying to move it through because they really like that idea.
How many cabins are you looking at, Steve?
Uh, it depends on cost, we're looking at at least two, maybe three, but again, kind of depends on cost and utilities to get those hooked up.
Can I ask why, I mean, I'm thinking of a home, and I'm thinking of why, why it's so expensive? I mean, more expensive than, you know, I think of a home and that to me, you know, but I'm thinking, is that, it it's a cabin to me, it's not quite as big. So is it the infrastructure that goes into it that's gonna cost so much more?
Well, we just got the, the bids in on the classroom office at Cordova. And those came in at about three hundred and seventy dollars per square foot. So those costs have gone up exponentially over the last six months. If you remember, we waited six months to eight months to try to bring those costs down, and we didn't gain anything. Uh, those costs actually went up. And again, at that point in time, lumber had dropped down to about five hundred and fifty dollars per thousand board feet. It's now at about thirteen hundred dollars per thousand board feet, so it's not, it's only about four hundred dollars off this all-time high, which was in May of last year.
And this is, and this is a competitive bid type circumstance that when you do this, just out of curiosity? I'm just asking you these questions because I don't know, and just out of curiosity.
Yeah, any, anytime you have a, a project over a hundred and forty thousand, that kicks in your, your bids. So yeah, it was a competitive bid.
And, and, you know, from, again, from the inflation or the cost increase standpoint, we take a risk if we think prices will come back down. Cause they may not. Even if the economy slows, and if you look at commodity prices right now, they're actually falling, other than gold. So, we take a risk by delaying those because prices may not come back down, even in a slowing economy, so. Uh, we tried that, it, it, they kept going up. Um, so, that is, uh, that's always a risk to delay, especially in this environment.
Yeah, and we're probably thinking, I mean, even to go through our, jump through the hoops that we need to, we're looking at summer probably at the very earliest to be able to, to, to start moving forward on that, probably construction in the fall because we have to get design work and, uh, you know, earthwork and all that stuff done with approval from the Corps. So, we've, we've got some hoops to jump through before we can actually give a good one on it.
So do you, I mean, predictions wise, you know how you always report to us of how much revenue you, you know, generate yourself? I mean, do you feel like this is gonna significantly increase that, or do you?
Well, again, it depends on, on the size of your cabin, and if you're going to make it like just a family-type one, there's some that are out there that are more of a group-type cabin, and you charge more for those because you'll have three or four families that show up and utilize those, so. Again, it kind of boils down to the size of what, of what your intent is, and then what you actually charge. To give you an idea right now, we generate, with the seven cabins we have now, we generate between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty thousand a year. During COVID, ironically, we generated a hundred and sixty thousand, so, um, and that's pretty sta- pretty standard per year going through that cycle. So, if you build two, you can probably figure that you're gonna be generating an additional between forty and sixty thousand annually, maybe a little bit higher than that. Again, based on how many bedrooms it is, but the, the thing about our locations are, they all have a great view of the lake. And that really helps when you have that, because everybody wants that. So, um, I think we've got some good sites picked out, so I think we actually will probably be able to charge a little bit more for those sites. Just for the amenities that they're gonna have.
Cause these may be just a little bit different than the other ones.
Yeah, I think you need to come up with maybe a little different design, I mean, it's been, the first ones we built were in nineteen ninety-five.
Right.
And the second ones, uh, group that we built was in two thousand and one, so over that time, there's been changes to cabins where people have done different things that have worked out better, so I think we need to look around and try to incorporate those down on our cabins to get the most bang for your buck on that design as well.
Any other questions for Steve?
I'm gonna ask a real stupid question here, Steve. Just so, just so everybody knows, these, these cabins are, will be on county-owned property, not federal-owned property?
They're on federal property leased to Marion County on a twenty-five-year renewable lease agreement, that's how that normally works.
Renewable as of now, right, or?
Well, we just renewed, and we've got a twenty-three-year lease agreement now. I'm actually working with the Corps to try to extend that because LawCon funds, which is a grant program from the federal government, we actually received a grant one year but were denied that grant because the, uh, we didn't have more than a twenty-five-year lease agreement. The National Park Service administers LawCon funds, the, the Corps of Engineers administers those. And those two federal agencies couldn't get together on a twenty-five-year lease agreement. And so, we were, we actually had a forty-five thousand dollar grant, which we lost because the two federal agencies couldn't come together on a twenty-five-year renewable lease agreement. It has to be a full, so the Corps is trying to get us up to thirty or thirty-five so we don't have the same issue again. But it's always renewed, we've never had an issue with that, and somehow it was just a snafu between those two federal governments.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want it to appear as any opposition to it, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, it, it's federal property leased to the county.
So is it one of those things that if they ever didn't re- renew, it'd be, oh, by the way, this is ours, kind of, you know?
Well, no, you actually could move the, the cabins off the, the federal property if you want to, but the last thing in the world the Corps wants is any ground back. They don't wanna have to manage anymore ground. And plus, they think we're there, we're doing a really good job for them, or we're increasing the value of their property as well, so I don't see that as being a, a problem ever.
From a, from an ARPA standpoint, these funds, uh, or this proposal fits squarely within ARPA. Uh, so there's no question about the qualifications from a compliance standpoint. Question is, do we wanna allocate the money? So, is there any additional discussion on the request from Conservation for ARPA money?
Nope.
Is there a motion on the request for ARPA money from Conservation?
So you wanna finish items, the, the general one, then move to the two resolutions when you're done, or how? Just structurally wise, the way it was.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, we, we did it that way. Good, good catch, Jake, thank you, thank you. So let's talk about, uh, the premium pay, and then we'll move to the resolution, the resolution item. Hold that, hold what I just said. You got that? Replay that. Premium pay, we've talked about that, uh, a lot. At the last, I think it was the last meeting, I mean, it was two meetings ago. We were kind of discussing as a board what would be, I think we're in general agreement that we want to do something from a pay standpoint, utilizing ARPA funds, we can do that um, under the law, uh, within certain parameters, we've talked about those parameters at length. So the question really comes down to how much do we wanna allocate and to whom? Given the requirements of that, Lisa has put together a list. Do you still have that general list, Lisa? Probably a good idea to pull that up just as a refresh.
No, she has the whole list.
I do not have the original list that I had up there.
Okay.
I have, what, the final rule, I mean, the slide that shows that final rule that you and I had discussed.
Perfect, let's do that, let's get that up there, just so we have that. Well, we don't have that screen anymore.
Sorry, and, and it's just kind of little.
Yeah, it's alright.
It's small, but this is, came out in the final, um, final rule of January twenty twenty-two.
You know what would be simpler, if I could interject? I, I, I kind of looked at that list, but to me, I, I like to see a list of who's not, who's not on it and why. Wouldn't that make it easier?
I, I don't know, let's, let's talk through this first. I mean, we, the, the who's not on it and why would either be because they exceed the pay requirements.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, that's, that's not hard to understand, that's just the math works, so they make too much money, they don't qualify. But even with that, if you look here, and I'm gonna stand up and point to it, even here, if a worker doesn't meet either of these requirements, in other words, they're kicked out from a pay standpoint. Let's try this, yeah, so if a worker doesn't fit either one of these two requirements, or they're kicked out because of not meeting the pay requirement, or they're a salary employee, okay?
Okay.
You can go to item number three, and item number three says, you, you can still get ARPA money. But it has, you have to put it in writing as a Board, as to why they should receive that money. That becomes a compliance issue, alright, we'll have to put that in our file, we'll have to document, says right here. The essential duties, health, financial risks faced due to COVID, et cetera, et cetera, so they fall into those same COVID types of issues. But this requires a written statement as to why that worker would qualify.
I'm just bringing it up because we're gonna have, we'll probably have to answer those.
That's a great question.
Sorry.
No.
We're sorry, the discussion.
So as we've talked about it, we have really focused on bullet point one and two for our qualifications. That's the list of employees, we're not gonna, I, I don't want names or anything like that. But we have a, we have a, a total number, don't we, Lisa, of employees that would fit within bullets one and two?
Is that the one? I can't see it, I'm sorry.
Well, just what we.
Of, of total pe- employees now?
Well, the hundred and fifty percent, at the hundred and fifty, he's saying.
All in, I put everybody back in that even over the eighty thousand.
Yes.
So all in, we're at a hundred and thirty-eight employees.
At dollar figures.
So if you have a hundred and thirty-eight employees, I figured that at three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars each. And the ARPA money, that would be four hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars, and then with.
Say that again, four hundred what?
Four sixty-two.
Four sixty-two, three.
Okay.
And then with the FICA coming out of the ARPA money, we'd put a total of four hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. So I squeezed every penny a good out of that money.
So we grossed it up to cover FICA.
And, and electeds are not in this?
Electeds are not in.
Elected are not, no. But we can justify now those that are, that make over eighty thousand, that there were some that, that were going to miss out on the the, um, premium pay that we feel now, as long as we write a justification, then those can be covered now. So that, but the, the list includes for employees that worked in twenty twenty.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's good.
Right, it's not, it's not everybody who's currently employed, it's people that fit within that time requirement according to ARPA. So.
Yeah.
Thirty-two roughly, you said, thirty-two.
Which will be a little confusing to some people.
Thirty-three fifty.
I have a.
Thirty-three fifty, good.
And that's grossed up for FICA.
Yep.
So the net would be after taxes, somewhere in the, probably two thousand, two hundred dollar range, something like that. Which, you know, as we talked about in the past board meetings, I originally started out with a much lower number, but also with a much smaller group. And then as, through the course of our discussions, I had just thought about it some more and said, you know what, we need to make this meaningful to reflect the unique situation our employees were in during COVID. For a period of time, we didn't know what we were dealing with. We were also doing a move
Right.
during that time. And I don't care whether you were in the courthouse, or law enforcement, or public health. There were a lot of unknowns. And go back to the beginning, which now it seems like that was quite a while ago, right? You had people stepping up into roles because we had other people who were in quarantine.
Yeah.
And they did lights-out work. You know, and so, you, you have to recognize the fact that people were being asked to do things that were nowhere near what their job descriptions originally intended. And.
Yeah, and we appreciate them, and we appreciate the roles that they, I mean, because we asked people to do, like you said, we asked people to do things that they were like, what? And they were willing to do it, and they come to work, and there's some of them that work seven days a week.
The, the PIO role that we currently have was created during COVID. By asking somebody from the Treasurers Department to come and do something completely different. So, it, it.
Thank you, Michaela, for allowing that, appreciate that.
So, um.
And Jamie, we appreciate, we appreciate you.
Yeah, so, anyway, I wanted it to be meaningful. If you bring it down too far, after taxes, we're not giving our employees really much of any kind of appreciation for that. And I don't think it conforms with the spirit of what premium pay was intended. So, this I believe is meaningful, and I think it's a good use of, of those dollars, uh, for our staff, so. Those are my thoughts.
And I think, you know, the media's here, want the media, you know, we want the citizens to know that this is not their tax dollars. This is the ARPA funds, so.
Well, it's, it's unfortunate that we can't give it to some elect, not me, not, I'm not talking about me personally, but some, some elected official that will, will just as hardworking as the rest of them. I, I struggle with that.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's also falls under something, you know, we, Lisa and I discussed. You know, we have a compensation board, and that board, it gives a recommendation, and you can't go above that, too, so. So, you know what, and as, honestly, as an elected, um, we do this service, and, you know, we're here to serve, and it makes it difficult, but I also want, you know, those, um, the staff of Marion County, I want them to know that we do appreciate them, and, uh, sometimes maybe that doesn't always come out the way we want it to, but we do, I mean, all the extra hard work, so, we thank you.
No, I, I agree, I'm totally supportive of, of the, uh, premium pay. Sometimes I struggle with the, the thought process behind it, but, but I do know that people did, and like Mark said, that we, we will kind of, had some extraordinary circumstances with the COVID and the move, but, you know, we would've had that problem with the move, if COVID wasn't there or not anyway, but, but I am supportive of it.
Yeah, only full time.
Well, is there any other discussion before we go on to the next item? I'm not hearing anything. Let's close discussion on this, and then we'll go to the resolutions, and we can talk more.
Make motion, we close discussion on ARPA projects.
Second.
Johnor.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye. Very good. So the first item is for Conservation, with its resolution. My number's here, I gotta make sure I'm reading the right one here. Twenty-two dash seventeen.
I don't have that on my hand.
Yeah, it's, it's on the, it's on the resolution.
Yeah, it's just not as a resolution here.
Twenty-two dash seventeen is the resolution to use ARPA money, uh, as requested by Conservation. You see the breakdown on the resolution as we've discussed. Is there any additional discussion?
No, I don't have anything further.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, make motion, uh, to approve resolution twenty, twenty-two dash seventeen.
Second.
McCollum.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye.
Johnor.
Aye.
Alright, very good. Next is resolution twenty, twenty-two dash eighteen, and that is, uh, the use of ARPA funds for the salary and premium pay discussion we just had. Is there any additional discussion?
Well, well, I, I noticed on the other slide, we're paying that, we're paying that, it's almost, we're gonna do that in one month some.
The concept is to pay it in one month some.
Okay.
Do we have any idea when that'll go out, Lisa? Is that, that's approved?
So, probably sometime in February. I think there's some timing issues, um, with payroll, um, just a little how we're gonna process that, so.
Okay.
I don't know that we have a date yet, Jake.
No, we're not gonna.
Yeah, so, give us a little bit of time to work through that with the, um, Otter's Office, because I know it does affect um, how, how they pay, um, coming out of one fund, everybody.
First time, first time thing, so.
Nope, I get that, yep.
If it gets approved, then we have to figure out how to do it.
Yep, so, yeah.
First time, only time. Unless we get more ARPA money.
Right, I was gonna say, this is a one-time deal, yeah, this is, yeah.
Alright.
This is kind of historic.
Yeah, would you like department heads to communicate this to employees, or will there be something from the board, or HR? I mean, I can surely do it, I just want to make sure I'm communicating the intent and.
So after, after, after approval, if the, if it is approved, we'll put together a bullet point statement for department heads to be able to talk to their employees about it.
Thank you.
I've already started that draft. Steve?
There's a typo in your resolution, uh, with the hundred and nine trillion dollars, is that gonna affect your, you, will you have to pass this again through the typo?
For the premium pay? Let's see. Oh.
Nine trillion dollars. It's one, it's one trillion. Right?
Yeah, what's the other one say?
Not that I think it matters all that much, Steve.
We didn't catch the other one, yeah.
I mean, they printed how much? We'll fix it on the backend, but thank you for catching that. I think it's one point oh nine trillion is the actual ARPA. We need a decimal point. Government doesn't care about those decimal points, though.
You can definitely change this one.
What's happening?
You can change it down, it's always a draft.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
So we'll make an amendment then to, say, one point oh nine trillion dollar ARPA fund. And is there a motion on this resolution as amended?
Yeah, I make the motion to approve as amended, um, resolution twenty, twenty-two dash eighteen.
Second.
Remy.
Aye.
Johnor.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, and then Lisa, we'll get together on that
Yes.
list for staff. Very good, thank you. Alright. Next resolution is twenty, twenty-two dash sixteen. Is to amend Pella Precinct Number One. Jake?
Yeah, that's me.
That is you.
So, again, another long process, uh, during this re-precincting that, um, we have talked about over the last few weeks. Uh, we're bringing this back to, so just as a status update, the county has approved its precinct ordinance, um, submitted the ordinance, um, our maps, um, including the new changes with Indian Township and Franklin Township being created as a precinct. And the worksheet to the Secretary of State's office, the City of Pella had to do, uh, the same, and, uh, the City of Knoxville had to do the same due to their size. Um, the last couple of weeks during that process, and the review from Secretary of State, um, it was determined, uh, that, uh, that the City of Pella and Marion County needed to amend the memorandum of, of agreement for Pella Precinct One that was created due to the population count that was included at the end, there was a population of five included, it's actually in Mahaska County, that needed to not be there, so, and then the City of Pella, uh, amended the resol- the resolution creating, um, memorandum of agreement, agreement regarding Pella Precinct One, which was required due to census blocks being divided by their cultural limits. So they have approved it and amending the population and their worksheet, and have submitted it to the Secretary of State. Um, the City of Knoxville has submitted theirs, actually spent quite a bit of time on the form of Secretary of State yesterday. Uh, the City of Knoxville, I believe, uh, has answered their, the Secretary of State's questions as well, and, uh, actually during this meeting this morning, I believe, I want to speak for the City of Knoxville, that they got to enter approval of their plan. Our plan, um, um, is going to be resubmitted with the updated amendment and the updated population worksheet, including the change to Pella and the change to two in Knoxville that, uh, they had submitted after we, at, the change after we had approved our worksheet. That's a lot of words to say, we're doing this again, and we hope this is the last time. But there's no difference in, we now have the nineteen precincts. Like I said, we have approved our ordinance, uh, the holding locations, the attendance is still at state seventeen. Um, this is due to the legislative districts being right through the middle of our county. It's very confusing, it's been quite a process, the Secretary of State's dealing with it, all the cities and all the counties getting this, um, all at once, so. Uh, I guess I recommend approval of this agreement, and I, I hope that we don't have to come back to you again, but no promises of this once every ten year process.
Nope.
Well, I appreciate it, Jake. Any, any questions for Jake?
No, appreciate Jake, um, all the work you put into this. I know that this is, uh, timing, you know, time consuming, so, I don't have any further questions.
Steve?
I'm good.
Alright, is there a motion?
Make, uh, motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-two dash sixteen.
Second.
Johnor.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye, very good, thank you. Chris, anything to update, other than it's coming down?
Uh, shutdown week for maintenance issues, that's why you don't see a lot going on, other than that, things are on schedule.
Perfect. Board, any questions for Chris? Alright, let's, motion to close discussion.
Make motion to close discussion on the VA project.
Second.
McCollum.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye.
Johnor.
Aye.
Very good, updates. Mr. McCollum.
Well, I had the opportunity to, uh, go to Columbia to a breakfast Saturday morning. I was invited down there to speak about something. It was, it was quite informative, too, I mean, it was, it was very interesting, I was glad they, glad they asked me down. Also, uh, I'm glad my next two meetings this week fall in between the budget sessions.
Yep.
This is Johnor.
Yep. Uh, have fifth judicial tomorrow and impact this week. My meetings also land, uh, in middle of, uh, budget sessions, but, yep, thankful for that, so, I don't have anything else.
Well, we've got, uh, just a couple of things going on. Actually supposed to be a mental health meeting today that the vice chair will have to take, because we start a budget meeting this afternoon, so I will be here, can't be in two places at once. Thursday, I'm at State Capitol all day, uh, in the morning, talking about, uh, RIF money. This is the same pool of dollars we tried to acquire for the VA last year. I'm going up to make the same sales pitch again to legislators, uh, talk about the VA project, and I'll be with Kelly, our lobbyist, uh, for the day. Second meeting is our mental health nonprofit meeting. Uh, we'll be with Kim and Rachel and Kevin Kincaid from Knoxville Hospital, who's talking about that, so it's gonna be a full day at the Capitol. And then lastly, we are having regular meetings with the City of Knoxville, uh, and their economic development consultants on the VA project. And kind of the go-forward once construction is completed, or our demolition is completed. So those have been very productive so far, uh, and they've presented some proposals on what they want for next steps. And, uh, I'll leave, I'll let the city be the ones to talk about that in more detail. I know they've done that at their city council meetings. But, uh, very pleased with what they've got so far, and we'll continue to have those discussions, especially as we're closer to the end of demo, which is coming fast. Very excited about that, so, that's all I got.
Make motion to adjourn. Oh, wait.
Oh, Lisa.
Sorry. Um, I think there's a little bit of confusion with the one o'clock meeting this afternoon, that maybe not all department heads were aware of that.
Who's confused?
Uh.
Brad, the one o'clock budget meeting.
I am now.
Yeah, there's several department heads that didn't realize there was a one o'clock meeting, and I think it's because, uh, I'm guessing, Jake, I don't know, if they didn't sign up for the e-notifications? Or was it because it was a special?
Um, all agendas are put on the website now, and if you get e-notified for all coming agendas, that's.
But if you're not signed up for e-notify, then you're not getting any of the agendas.
Well.
And this is just an overview, yeah.
Just, just to de-confuse everybody, I mean, they can work that issue out with notifications with Jake on getting, getting the agendas. But this is our kickoff meeting, like we always have, it's, I call it Jake's opportunity to tell us what's in the book. Uh, it probably lasts two hours max, chance for the board to kind of get their heads around everything that they've got to read and digest before next week. That's all this is about.
And we'll have it on film if they would like to.
Yep, absolutely.
So sorry for any confusion. It sounds like what needs to be cleared up here again is that agenda stopped being submitted to, like, blank everybody several months back when the website started. All agendas, please, for supervisors and also other several departments are, through the e-notification process on the website, you can't.
Because we get it the same way.
The warning given when those agendas went out, that stopped a couple of months ago, so.
So department heads sign up for e-notify.
Please sign up to be e- notified through the, you can pick which ones you want, and that's kind of how that process works.
Sorry, I just heard that comment more than once, so.
Yeah, apologize.
Okay.
And then.
No worries, no worries.
And then we will be having a sign up, I'm assuming here, soon for next week.
We're, we're gonna work through that when we talk at one o'clock, so. We'll get that done. Alright? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCollum.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye.
Johnor.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. See y'all back here later, or at least some of you.